Committee meeting on March, May 18th. We still haven't changed the date, the year. Roll call vote. Wayne Adams?
Yeah.
Joanna?
Here.
Jill?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
Brian?
Yes.
Chris?
Reading?
Chris Wiles?
Yes.
Jack O'Leary? Joanna, why don't you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The agenda, we're missing public comment. It wasn't. We'll put it right after the minutes. How's that? It'll go down, okay?
Can I add, I'd like to have an update on the status of Gail associates and where they're at. Can we just have a short discussion on that?
Okay. Gail associates, okay. Where do you want to put that? Jeff? Want to put that down, new business, seven?
Or I can, I can comment about that, maybe in the superintendent's report.
Yeah, superintendent's report. Yep, very good, very good. Okay. Any other additions? Okay. All those in favor, agenda as amended? Minutes, business meeting February 25th, 2014.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Business, finance, and operations, March 4th, 2014. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? The human resource, March 4th, 2014. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Teaching, learning, and accountability, March 4th, 2014.
Can I amend? Make a motion to amend?
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
You second it, then we can discuss it, then you can make, okay? Okay. Lisa?
Um, I was at the meeting, so I thought it could be added on.
Oh, sorry about that, Lisa.
All those in favor of the meeting minutes as amended? Thank you. Policy, March 4th, 2014. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. We will go into an executive session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an opening, open meeting may be a deterrent effort on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chairman so declares. Wayne?
Yes.
Not any new motions.
Motion to go into executive session.
Okay. Good. Wayne?
Yes.
Point of order, does that have to do with teacher contracts?
Uh, no.
Okay. And yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
And we will be returning.
Yeah, we very, well, hopefully, Charlie.
I didn't switch, I can't say that, yeah.
Very end.
No, we did.
You had the rock and roll. Not going to make the motion.
I saw a woman out there reading at the edge of the road and talking on her phone.
Do you need that, or just a 3% of his contract?
That would be helpful. So, his contract for the amount reflects a certain percentage.
Okay, we have a out of order motion on Jack Comera's contract.
So, what?
Chris, would you?
I'll make a motion that the school committee approve, a 3% increase for the 2012-13 contract year for Jack Comera, based on a contract value of $50,001.85.
Do I have a second?
Is it 2012-13 or 1314?
1213. He retired in December 2013.
Okay. Any question? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, superintendent's report. Two poor hoards.
Okay. Superintendent's report tonight is a lead-in for Mr. Adams and his committee for the superintendent evaluation. I distributed to everybody a copy, a packet, and I'm going to just go through this for you, so that we can, we can kind of gear up for the superintendent's evaluation, or you can. So, back on what the cover sheet is, the minutes from the teaching, learning, and accountability subcommittee meeting on January 7th. On January 7th, I went through a mid-year review that included the district improvement plan, and what was very good about that is, I think it was actually Jill, who made connections between the district improvement plan and my evaluation. And that's exactly appropriate. The goals and the district improvement plan are actually the focus areas that I have in my superintendent's evaluation plan. If you turn the page, turn one page in, you'll see all of the different standards and areas that I need to be evaluated in. So, it's appropriate that, though I have a focus, we take a look across these very broad areas to see, to what degree am I making an impact? Where's the work and documenting some evidence? On the next page, you have, again, down the center of the page, the five strategic objectives of the district improvement plan, and on each subsequent page, if you turn just one more in as an example, what I've listed for you, and that you also have in your district improvement plan, are those five strategic objectives with a SMART goal, so that you can see what I'm working toward. So, for instance, in the first one, by May 2014, 50% of the teachers will have created one instructional unit that integrates challenging standards, adaptive leadership skills, and high levels of personal meaning for students, supporting their successful achievement. That relates back to the development of a high-powered curriculum. So, just as Jill pointed out in our subcommittee meeting, my work is directly connected to the work in the district. So, if you look at the district improvement plan, a lot of that is actually what I do on a daily basis. So, that sets the stage for you for the work that the committee is going to do about evaluating the superintendent. And Wayne tonight has a copy of the total rubric for you to take, a paper copy of the total rubric, and it will define and explain to you all of those different components. So, if you look under a standard or under an indicator, it will take you right down into the elements, all of those different elements, and it's an explanation to help you see and gauge, to what degree am I doing these different things. Wayne, last year was a great resource for helping the committee to understand how to use that rubric and how to document evidence, you know, so that everybody had some different things to contribute. He'd be doing about the same kind of thing this year, from what I understand, and I didn't know, Wayne, if you had anything to contribute, you know, at this point.
I was going to give each member the actual paper copy of the rubrics.
Yeah.
And unlike last year, they didn't send us the end of the cycles summative evaluation that makes it easy that you could have circled numbers after you did the rubrics, but you can just as easily just circle the rubrics and we can bring them over. Mary Ann will be giving May, the numbered one, you can trince for over, and tonight I'm going to give you the head, header page that will require your signature when you actually pass it in, in earnest. Each one of the subcommittee meetings, as well as everything you write down, is for the public. When we pass in, we actually have to pass in our data as well, for the state, if they want to see the raw data from individuals of the school committee, they have a right to see it. No big deal. We've got the exact same four standards, 20 indicators, 43 elements, same as last year. So, there's four major topics that Dr. Mulqueen just got through telling you. When you read through this, you'll see that it's identical. Matter of fact, when you see that the state copied these off, they're 2012 still, so this is introductory one again, all right? So, if you're talking, I'll give you these out, give these out to you. Take a look, and if you wanted to, why don't I pass these down? And I just wanted to point out something to you, there's a couple of you did last year. You actually just did circle the rubric, and that was fine, because I knew exactly what you thought for any of the indicators, all of the strands involved. So, from this packet, they give you added glance again, and they're going to, when you open it up, from the back, upside down, et cetera, as they did last year. But if you turn to indicator 1A on the superintendent's rubric, it's page A2 of A18. The standard is instructional leadership, it's one of four standards, and under that, you'll have one or more elements of those standards. Each one will have four rubrics, running from unsatisfactory to exemplary. You could take it home, and at your leisure, you could go through it and actually circle it, and your job is done. And we will transcribe them, and the subcommittee will come up with a way, because there's going to be ties, there's going to be some areas that are somewhat clouded, of which the subcommittee will talk about it, to make it either exemplary or proficient, because there was a tie. The most important thing that the state wants is evidence, and that's the most difficult for us to do, provide evidence, because we're not on the ground floor for everything. Jeff provides us with as much as any superintendent would provide any school committee. And that evidence, we have to try to stay away from literary flower, and that means our superintendent, yeah, he's a great guy, he's super, he dresses well, he's really turned the community around, et cetera. That means nothing to the state. If you say he's exemplary in instructional leadership on lesson development, then I would like you, if you know, to make a comment right below in each one of these sheets, and just label it 1A2, lesson development. Dr. Mulqueen has provided support with his administration team on a weekly basis throughout the year to ensure, blah, blah, blah. That's not flower, that's very specific, and that's what the state would want, okay? And the team who gets together, the subcommittee, will indeed, I'll compile them, and then I'll give them to the team and take a look, and the agreement will come back to you people, the final results, with all the paperwork being signed, documented, and passed in. The state actually will only require the final compilation, but if they ever want it, I guess Mary Ann's going to have to come up with it. So, no big deal, you've got it in front of you, and circle what you think is correct and validate what you can, don't feel you have to come up with something if you don't have the experience, or you're not sure that it is valid. But what Jeff just passed out to us would be a nice little reminder on what we can link to his progress in this school district, these district goals that he's provided, and what has, where we're headed, where we've come, and where we stand. So, there's linkage between the two. And I'll say this, like I did last year, Jack and I were going to go out to lunch, because I said I will go sit with anybody at any time, you tell me time and place, and I'll walk with you through this, and so it won't be so difficult if, for some reason, educational rubrics become slightly terrifying, because they're not.
Yes, they are.
Joanna?
Okay, so, you had also given us this, which shows you exactly what you've done, and I know it's only, this was given out a while ago.
Yeah.
So, it's only current now through, mine's only completed through, I guess, October?
Yeah, that was my, that was a past one, right, yeah.
So, do we have?
I can provide an updated one, right.
Because I think that would be useful.
Sure, okay.
You filling it out?
Yeah.
Jill?
If I wanted to get some kind of data to show, for instance, if I was scheduling, wanting to see your regularly scheduled meetings at different buildings, would I call Mary Ann for that, to show, yeah, he does go to all the different buildings on a regular basis?
Yeah.
In order to show proof?
Or you could, if you had particular questions like that, like, I'd like to know about your administrative meetings, or if you come in, I can show you examples of agendas, I can show you in my calendar when I go to the schools.
So, as we're trying to sort these out, if we don't have our own evidence that you've provided to us?
Yes, I mean, with me, I'm happy to provide that.
Okay.
I talked, actually, with Wayne about this, and if I were to actually compile all of this information for you, all this evidence, you'd have a couple of binders, you know, to go along with it. That's not the point of the evaluation tool anymore, it's, it's more about effectiveness rather than compilation of paper. So, sure, make an appointment, come on in, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
And then go one more thing, this header page, don't be concerned about step one, step two, which is a lot about SMART goals, et cetera, but we're most concerned with the packet that you got for the rubrics for the actual evaluation, is the evaluator and their signature to go along with your packet.
Do you need it?
I'm giving it to you right now.
I don't see it needed.
When do you need it back?
We've got quite a bit of time since, what, March 15th? I'm guessing.
End of April?
Right, end of April.
You don't need it till the end of April?
Nope.
You're asking for an awful lot there, Wayne.
And I apologize for that.
So, and what happens if we get to a rubric for we, like, just like I'm new? So, say I get something.
You don't know, you leave it blank.
I just leave it blank, I don't circle anything.
That's right.
Okay.
Or feel free to give me a call, call Wayne.
Okay.
Yeah. Happy to help. Thanks, Wayne, I appreciate all that help.
You have become the Rubric Man of Kentucky.
You'll never, you can never leave this school committee.
Okay. Innovative school, oh, Jeff, you have more, don't you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, update on Gail. So, very timely question about Gail associates, so they're, they're moving ahead, they've got some really great work done with the Conservation Commission, and Greg is going to be meeting with them for an update on the 25th. So, after the 25th of this month.
Because on the 25th, what they want to come forward with was something that Jack and I had talked about, and it was a concern to several of the committee members, was to what the bid package may start to look like. I got that email very late today, so I'll be sending out a reminder to everybody who wants to come, because I know there's certain things we want to talk about, having the towns help with that, to reduce costs and things like that, so we can sit down as a group, anybody that wants to come in there. But I have been informed of that by the chair and some other ones, that we want to keep this as much in-house as we can to cut the cost as much as possible.
Exactly.
So, if we're going to bring forward some sample bid packages, I'll be sending an invitation out to all of you to attend that one as well. Unfortunately, in Gail, it's a little early, it's like a 3:00.
Yeah.
But I'll be forwarding that to you.
The 25th, right, at 3:00, superintendent's conference room. So, does that help, Chris?
Today we're meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. I'll set Jack.
Yeah. Okay. Innovative school grants.
Yep, so, we have been notified about the Innovation School Grants, $10,000 for each of the five applications. Greg is anxious to set up those grants so that we can begin spending, and what we're asking for you all to do is to approve the receipt of the grant so that we can move forward.
Make a motion to accept the grants.
Second.
Question? Question? Yes.
That's assuming we approve the Innovation Schools ultimately.
No, it doesn't. So, this is a planning grant, and it's independent of whether you approve any Innovation School or not, it's just planning money for the teams.
There's no strings attached to it, it's just to do the preparatory work.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Lisa?
Is the money designated and how it is to be used?
Yeah, so, when we made the application, there are certain lines that everybody had to address, so there's professional development, travel, and there are allocations, you know, for each of the grants.
So, that's not in addition to the $10,000?
That's for the $10,000.
That's the $10,000 owed to be used.
They had to say how they were going to use it, right?
Any other questions?
And is any of that money to be used for curriculum?
It's only for the planning.
Okay.
Yeah, so, for instance, some teams are going to make purchases of some curriculum materials. Other teams, like the International Baccalaureate Team, much of that fund is going for the consultancy for approval, you know, for certification. So, each team made its own allocations.
Any other question before you go? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Scheduled public hearing for the Innovation Schools.
As part of the process for Innovation Schools, once the planning committee has finished, and they're all beginning to finish up, then it has to come to a public hearing prior to it coming to you. It's a way for you to gather information from the public, and what I'm hoping for is that last Tuesday of April, April 29th, if you would consider having a public hearing, we could have each of the Innovation Schools come and do a very quick presentation, have the public hearing for each of them, and just get it over in one night.
So, we can vote on if we're going to have it that night?
No, it wouldn't come back to you until May, your business meeting in May, where you would vote for each of them, you know, you would approve or not for each of those different schools.
Kentucky Regional School Calendar.
So, is that agreeable to everybody?
So, we're going to have a public hearing on the 29th?
That's right.
29th of April.
Six, is it 6:30, like a normal meeting?
Is that okay with everybody, 6:30 on the 29th?
I see everybody's head shaking.
Okay.
And how many separate presentations will there be?
Well, we have five different schools, there could be six.
Okay.
Is that new? Is this the banking one?
No.
No. Except the STEAM.
The STEAM.
High B, STEAM, three at the high school.
Well, but STEAM could be two separate.
STEAM could be two separate schools.
For Badmal and Paige.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Calendar?
Calendar.
Okay, in your packet, you have a copy of the proposed school calendar. I've talked through this with the union, I just want to point out a couple of changes for you. So, you'll notice that the full days of professional development are all grouped together at the beginning of the school year. So, if you look at the last week of August, where those little diamonds are, those are the full days of professional development. You'll notice that there are still five 90-minute early releases during the year. One is on October 10th, which is the Friday before the Columbus Day holiday, one is before Martin Luther King Day in January, one is on the Friday before February vacation, one is on the Friday before April vacation, and one is in May, opposite the long weekend in May. So, those are some of the shifts that have been made, and, you know, I guess the rest is pretty much boilerplate.
So, is this a permanent shift to going back to, going back after Labor Day?
It's not a permanent shift, it just happened to work out that way for this year. So, it could change back next year, where we distribute the days a little bit differently.
The parents, by the way, really like having the half-day, their early releases backed up to the long weekend. I've heard a lot of positive feedback on that.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of positive feedback, too.
So, I just have one question on the calendars, because that Minova District in our area that just screwed up with their April vacation this year, and it's scheduled a week earlier. So, how, like, too early, earlier than everybody else's, it's not set on the Massachusetts vacation schedule, so.
Third Mondays.
Yeah, so, is, how does this get checked? Is it always, the April vacation's always?
Third week in April, third week.
Monday.
Yeah, third.
Third Monday.
And the same in February.
It's always the third Monday.
Presidents.
Okay.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
So, this is, this is for a school year of 180 days. Kentucky used to be 182 days. I don't know if it was this year that it switched, or is it this next year?
Last year, that was because of the 20 early releases.
Oh, I see. So, you used to have a lot more early release time in your calendar? So, so I've been following the 180 days.
Chris?
Two comments, Joanna, I did go through a calendar, and I checked every date, too. I do it every year, just to make sure, it all looked good to me. So, I'm not just voting blind.
Oh, there was no mistake? What did you say, Chris?
I said there were no mistakes.
Oh, is it?
A little louder. Don't let your head swell too much, but I'm also going to say that last year was his first step at consolidating these half-days and the teacher days, and he's done even better now. I think it makes for a phenomenal use of the time to get more full school days out, and I applaud you for it, I think it's very good.
Parents have liked it a lot.
Lisa?
Yeah. I did pick up on some mistakes.
Oh.
Lisa!
Lisa.
It's what I get paid for, right?
Yeah, that's what you get paid for.
Did you want to represent those now?
Can I?
I think you should.
Should I? Okay.
So, tell me, what do you think is a mistake?
Going down the center?
Yeah.
From, you have October 6th as an early release, but on the calendar, it's October 10th.
Okay.
Ooh.
All right, you're better than Chris.
Chris, you've got a counterpart here, Chris.
I had to look down the middle, I checked the calendar, I could care less about what it is.
All right, thank you.
And then, further down, you have 2014 listed over January.
Okay.
You know, we do this, and we look at it 100 times, and there's always.
Yeah, you need fresh set of eyes, so.
We won't be repeating 2014.
But maybe we can do it next year.
And the other question that I had, then there was two questions that I had. On November 26th, that's an early release, it says, you know, down the center, early release, that's the day before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Three hours, school closed for Thanksgiving. Can we put down all schools, just for further clarification?
We can.
It's assumed, I think.
Yeah. Okay, and then. Unless it's that specific. And then the other one was, you have the report card dates listed for the elementary schools.
Yeah.
Can we also have them listed for the middle and high schools, just so parents can expect when the report cards are coming home?
Well, we put the quarter dates down, and I asked that same question, and I think the high school at least needed a little leeway about how they were going to be doing that for next year.
Okay, depending on the dates of the actual closing.
Yeah, so the quarter dates are listed there, and then, there's, I think, that, you know, once you know that, you know that the report cards are coming home after.
Around.
Yeah, in or around that date.
Okay.
Not before. Yeah, let's not give too much information. I would like, I would like more concrete kinds of things, we had asked for that, but it was a little problematic, right at this point, to be able to publish it, so we were able to put the quarter dates down. Maybe next year we could do that, Lisa.
You have the, you have the 90-minute early release times on both sides.
Mm-hmm.
I know, I never know what the start times are sometimes, like, I know that there's some differences, could we put that instead? Because I don't know that there's anywhere on the website even that has it all listed.
For each of the schools?
For each of the schools.
Just the regular.
Which came into play when you have a two-hour or 90-minute delay, and I was like, oh my God, I have no idea when anybody's going.
God, I have no idea when anybody's going.
Next, next year, we're not having any delays or dismissals.
No, I know, but then it's 10 past 8.
So, what we can do is, in place of one of those, in place of one of those 90-minute early release times, we can put in the start and end time, the regular schedule.
I think that that would be helpful.
Yeah, sure.
With children in multiple schools.
Okay, is everyone all right with this calendar as amended, voting on it?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the calendar as amended with the three changes, the date in October being corrected, the date of 2014 being revised to 2015, and adding the scheduled start and end times on one side of the calendar.
Can I just ask one more question? The last day of school, is that usually a half-day?
Yes.
That's the superintendent's.
It's always a half decision.
It just doesn't say half-day. Does it, is it supposed to say that on the calendar?
We can add it.
Yeah, let's put it, is it designated, though? It's designated a court.
It's just not, doesn't have a.
It's a three-hour.
Yeah, it doesn't have a hexagon around it or anything.
Yeah.
On the calendar.
We will identify it.
Okay, very good. Joanna having seconded. Any other questions? None? Okay. All those in favor?
This is the most stressful thing all year.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next is medication delegation policy. This is an informational item only, and what you have in your packet is that we have actually received our one-year medication delegation certificate. We'll be applying for this each year. There are only a small number of schools that have this medical, medication delegation certificate, and the purpose of it is to give us more flexibility and give the nurses an additional ability to serve our students. So, you'll notice on the certificate that there are different schedules listed, it says schedules 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Those are medications and medication schedules, those are important to the nurses. So, any medication that is on our regular schedule, like twice a day, three times a day, et cetera, those are the things that can be delegated out. You have to be trained, and there are some, you know, there are lots of parameters around that part. But we have only, yep.
If, did, I know they delegate the medications and so forth, what happens if the nurse isn't there? What happens? Do we have a program that would say that, you know, tomorrow, next two days, a nurse will be out for personal reasons? Do we have a nurse on staff that can give out these medications?
So, we have a nursing agency that we rely on, but occasionally, you're right, occasionally we don't even have anybody who can come in, not even a substitute. So, we have to cover within our, within, across buildings, or we have to call a parent and rely on the parent at this point. So, with the delegation component here, there are only a few people in the district who will be trained, and who'll be able to extend that to a student. So, it's, it's not that you can give out aspirin or, you know, anything.
No, but the person at the school would be able to give out the.
Because they'd be trained to do it, they would know how to go into the medicine cabinet, how to register it, because it's a whole procedure that you have to follow. So, the last part is, after this certificate, you'll see that I provided you with the state sample policy. I'm going to be bringing this to the policy committee for adoption so that we can move forward. So, once the state gives you permission, the certificate, then the district has to come up with a policy. But it's not quite like we have to come up with it, because the state also tells you you have to follow their, their policy. So, there it is, that's the policy, I'm going to go through it and bring it to the policy committee, and then the next committee meeting, you'll be able to adopt it in April.
This is, this is something the state mandates, I mean, we can't change this policy, correct?
That's right.
So, why can't we just approve it tonight?
Well, because when I bring you the policy, I also want the training that people have to go through, I want the whole package there for you, and we're not at that point yet. But I wanted you to see that there is a policy that goes with it.
I do have some questions on it. You know, I understand the schedules, I did research those. I'm still left very concerned for the district, as some medications given to students are given on an as-needed basis, and if there's not a nurse qualified to do that, nursing in the building, those students are going to go without.
Right.
And you, from what I'm understanding, is that this doesn't cover the as-needed.
That's right.
And it also doesn't cover self-administration as well. For the older students, they can self-administer medications.
That's right.
And the other things that I noticed, too, is, so, you said the training is going to be brought back.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's not part of this right now. And how many people are going to be trained?
There are six people. So, assistant principals are typically those people, principals and assistant principals who would be trained.
But we don't have assistant principals in some of our buildings.
No, so, we would have the school support coordinator, that person could be trained with the principal.
Okay. And in regards to the nursing shortage, when we, I mean, there have been times that there has not been a nurse in the building, the substitutes have been called, and the agency has been called.
Mm-hmm.
I want to see more agencies added on, I don't want to see just one agency, because I think we're leaving ourselves open to a liability issue.
That's right. So, we can make, we can take steps to try to build a greater capacity, but I think you're exactly right, additional agencies could be called, we could have a greater workforce available to us, you know, so, it's about extending beyond what we currently have.
Because it doesn't cost money to the district to have an agency.
On hand.
Unless we hire, then at that point it costs.
That's right.
But we could have five agencies, and just to have five, it doesn't cost anything.
That's right, yeah, so I'm open to doing that, for sure.
I have a question. At one time, the district, in the opening of school, they sent out a notice in all the communities, Grohl, Merrimack, and West Newbury, that if any RNs or anything like that wanted to be a substitute, we would, we would take them, their names down. Are we still doing that?
Yeah, so we advertise quite frequently for nursing substitutes, right? They're just not readily available.
And the last question I had is, the policy that's here, it's only three pages long, and if you look at the last page on letter R, it just leaves you hanging. So, I did, I did find this policy online, and it's actually 15 pages long, and I was wondering why the other 12 pages were not included.
Well, this is a sample of what we have to go through for you, so I was just providing this amount for you to see that there is a policy available. It's not that we have any flexibility in that, we have to actually move through with the actual policy that the state has. So, I'll be bringing that to the policy.
Will the whole 15 pages be brought to the?
Policy committee, right.
Policy committee?
Yeah, so we weren't going to make a decision about that tonight, I'm just illustrating for you that there is a policy, the State Department requires us to adopt it, I'll be bringing that to the policy committee.
Okay, I mean, because, you know, as you know, I mean, I've spoken too many times about it, I'm just concerned that, you know, the health services in the schools are in place for all the students, but more importantly, for the students that are essentially have disabilities or require medications.
Definitely.
And if the nurses aren't in place, the kids aren't getting FAP, and, you know, they need a free and appropriate public education.
Of course.
In a safe environment, so, this needs to be addressed.
I'm trying to.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Moving along, use of vehicles.
Use of vehicles policy, right. So, the, the recommendation from the policy committee is that we adopt the use of vehicles policy that you have in front of you, and this has gone to our attorney, and I think you got in your packet both the attorney's comments and the final copy, so what we'd like to do is adopt that.
Yeah, italics part, too, that he asked us to add before we sent it to the attorneys.
That's right. So, it's been through the policy committee, and we, they're recommending that you adopt it.
Make a motion to accept the vehicle, policy on vehicle usage.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes, Doug?
Yeah, just curious to make sure that we did have the tested alcohol, drug tested, in case of an accident, that's it.
Yeah, that's the italics part of D4. Chris asked it to be put in italics, then went to the attorney, who added a few more things that you'll see that align up.
They added a lot of things.
They had a few comments.
Yeah, there was a few italics in there that you guys wanted put in, I put in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Were you at the last policy meeting?
Yeah.
And went through that, I think?
Yes.
Yes, I did, I made my notes, and I compared them to his with the italics, and then verified on the final copy, so.
Budget-supported borrowing, oh, let's vote on it.
There you go, Jack.
We have a first and a second. Lisa, your discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor, accepting it? Go over it. Okay, budget-supported borrowing votes in regional agreement amendments.
In your packet, you have a synopsis of the votes, as well as some of the cover sheets from the bond council. We talked to her about it earlier, because there was some consternation about how long it would take to read all these, so, she basically said that as long as the committee takes a vote that they have reviewed and read them, then they don't have to be read out loud, and you vote them each as, you know, vote number one, vote number two, and approve them that way, and that would be acceptable to them. These are the four borrowing articles that were voted by the school committee back on February 4th to be placed into the budget. The towns all have them, as well as the two regional agreement changes that we had talked about earlier, one that would have precluded one of the borrowing votes that we have to redo for Merrimack, and one at the request of the town of West Newbury, that basically changes the regional agreement that says that they want to prepay any of their debt service. That would only be applicable, the first change would only be applicable to middle, elementary school projects. The second change for prepaying would only be allocable to federal campus projects, middle high school projects. They've both cleared the review of the bond council or the various attorneys. The MSBA has gotten back and made suggestions that on vote number three, that this is how they would like it worded for the central, middle school green accelerated repair project. So, as you have them in front of you, they are the, excuse me, the first vote would be for the changes to the regional agreement that would apply only to a school prepaying work at the middle high school campus. The second one brings back the original article that an elementary school project only has to be voted by that one town, not causing other towns to have to have town meetings where it doesn't really affect them, which was why we have to revote number four, because the other Grohl and West Newbury didn't act on the Merrimack borrowing article. What the attorney would like us to do is if all three towns revote it one more time, just so it's in sync, for the kitchen improvement at Donahue. The third vote is for, the third vote is for the, is the MSBA required language for the accelerated repair project. The fifth vote is the reallocation of the, I'm sorry, is the additional 1.4 million that the subcommittee recommended we try for, for the grounds project. And Article 6 is the reallocation of the $700,000, keeping it as it was, except for the removal of the, excuse me, the bleachers out back, because of the ADA issues, they didn't want us touching them, and driven, as you guys voted to compul, into that one project. So, there you have them in front of you, you can either vote to read them all out again and vote them individually, or vote them just by number that way. But if you do choose to do it that way, you have to vote as a committee that you've all understood, read them, and you, and you wish to vote in that way.
The motion?
Yeah, well, I'll make a suggestion, then I'll make a motion. I'll do exactly what Greg said, I'd like to go through, I'll read vote one, I'll read the synopsis of it, and then I'll make a statement that we all agree to it, and if we're interested in voting as such, and we'll go one through six.
Sounds good. We'll do it that way, ladies and gentlemen?
It's at your choice.
Okay.
I don't care to read them all, so. Vote number two, this vote is for Section 8 of the district agreement, is hereby amended by adding at the end of the following new section, and I am going to make the motion that we endorse the document, that we have read it, and we understand it.
Second?
Second. Discussion? None? All those in favor? Thank you.
Vote number two, this vote is for the Kentucky Regional School District Bonds Amendment to the Agreement Regarding Approval of Debt. Make a motion that we accept the agreement as written, and agree that we have read it and understand it.
Second.
Discussion? None? All those in favor?
Vote number three, this vote is for Kentucky Regional School District Middle School Project. Make a motion, we accept the wording, and agree that we have read it and understand it.
Second, second, second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Vote number four, this vote is for the Kentucky Regional School District Amendment to Merrimack Elementary School Projects. Make a motion that we vote the document, we have read it, and we understand it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Vote number five, this vote is for the Kentucky Regional School District Bonds Additional $1,400,000 for the athletic fields. Make a motion that we approve, and that we agree that we have read it and understand it.